Six thirty, welcome to Starbuck Regular Council Meeting for just March tenth already. So we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. If you'd call a roll, please, Dylan.
Mayor Swenson.
Here.
Councillor Tate.
Here.
Councillor Bakel.
Yep.
Councillor Christensen.
Here.
Councillor Garak.
Okay. The first item on the agenda is to the consent agenda. Is there any issues, questions, or additions to the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Okay.
I'll second.
Second? Okay, we have a motion by Councillor Tate to approve the consent agenda, seconded by Councillor Bakel. Any further questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carried. We're going to go ahead with the public hearing on the proposed vacation of Garter Street between East Second and East Third Street. You know, if there's any questions from the council or any comments from the people Did you want to talk about it?
Yeah, I can. Just, I feel with... So, just comments on it. I feel the vacation for that road on the north side of the street there would be in best interest for the city. The owners of the property have already been maintaining all the upkeep for that area anyway already, and if there'd be some way to allow an easement for city utilities that would need to be done, I think all owners would be more than willing to allow that access, and it would just increase revenue for the city because it would increase our taxes, and no one's going to put a street in that area anyway, so, yeah.
What if we had to put sewer and water through there or something?
Yeah.
And I don't know, Randy, is there sewer and water going through there now?
There's water through there. I think just about every utility in town uses that. Around Second and Everdropie, it's all wetland, so I think that's why most of them came through there, because there really isn't much of a shoulder for road, you know, if the water main in it. It's a lot easier to use that street to connect to Second Street, and, you know, we don't know what the future holds. Hundred years from now, two hundred years from now, three hundred years from now, what, you know, what development or what utility or whatever might need to come through, I guess. I just, I have some concerns about giving it away, and, I mean, the way it is now, you're still able to use it however you want, it just kind of limits building something on it, and even if you did own it with an easement, you still wouldn't be able to build on it, so.
Yep.
I guess I don't, I don't, I don't see the benefit of it, really. I mean, I was the one part of it there, you know, next door for many years, too. It's just like the Boulevard out front or, you know, the alley that's in the back, you know, you all can use it as your own, it just kind of limits building or developing more than.
All right.
I guess that's my thought.
How do you feel about that?
I think, at the end of the day, it is something that us homeowners are already taking care of and everything, and I think if anything long-term needed to be put in through, like utilities, we'd be more than comfortable and cooperative for that. It would just be nice to have a more just cut and dry for the residents that are there, basically, or maybe turn it into a smaller alleyway instead of a road itself if it had to maintain, just for building purposes for the future or whatnot. Because, you know, like, a portion of my house has to be shifted fifteen feet if anything was to ever happen to it due to the location, so.
You just apply for a variance or something if that happened, you know, if you had to rebuild or something like that, you know, there's, there's a lot of houses in town that one neighbor owns half of the neighbor's garage or half of the neighbor's house, you know, just, it's just the way stuff was plotted out.
Correct.
It wasn't as detailed, so.
Yep.
Would you have a problem if a condition of it was that if utilities or something had to go through there, that we'd have the right to dig it up?
No, I would have zero problem with that. I mean, that would be what you would be doing right now anyway, so, yeah.
How about the other property owners? Do you know how they feel?
I think all the other owners, Cody, at the time, I mean, we're all kind of on the same page with it. I think that was even the Knutsons, same thing.
They had signed that petition that's in the package.
Sure.
Yep.
Knutsons and was it Klinsmann?
Yeah, Klinsmann, myself, Knutsons, and then Schwan. Thanks, Mark.
You may, on the council, have any questions or...
Did we get any input from...
On planning and zoning, on what their thoughts are on that?
Yeah, planning and zoning, I think...
They approved it?
They approved it.
I mean, I, I guess my concern is, you know, it's functioning as it is right now. I mean, I don't really see a perceived benefit for, you know, doing the vacation. You guys still are maintaining it, I mean, I'm not, I'm not for changing something unless it's going to be a benefit or improvement, and that's kind of my thought, I guess, but I don't know how the rest of the council feels.
I kind of look at it, too, that it's working the way it is, and you just don't know what's going to be needed in the future, so I would be a little leery on letting it go.
Okay. All right. Is that a motion?
Well, it's actually at the end, or in item twenty-one, under new business, we can...
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
All right. Thanks for your time.
We'll address it later.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you. So, close the public hearing at six thirty-eight, and proceed to the next item on the agenda is Mike and Andrea Nadoo requesting a rezoning of parcel twenty-seven dash zero five nine oh dash zero six zero 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 to a rural service district, so.
Okay, so, do you guys have any questions up front on it, or...
We've talked about it a couple times, so...
Okay. What we found is the statute that was listed, I believe you guys have the paperwork, it was a two seven two dash six, or point six seven, allows cities to put or rezone a property into a rural service district depending on what type of municipalities that property has reliant on the city. The property where we're hoping to build a house here this spring, we're too far for city hookup to sewer and water, and we had already received the variance on doing septic and well water because of our distance from it. So, also because of that, we're looking at what the tax rates are. I'm glad I looked into it before we went too far with the build, but because we have zero connection or reliance on any city municipality, it could be relabeled as a rural service district. We had approached the idea of seeing if we would be allowed to annex into the township since we're not connected to the city in any way, for very obvious reasons. It was explained, no, it's not in the city's best interest, and that's when we found this statute which allows a city by ordinance to rezone a property. In the future, if I were ever to sell it or develop it myself, the city can turn it back into urban service district. It doesn't make anything permanent, it just would allow us to be put at the same tax rate that the contiguous township would be, but instead of being part of the township, the taxes would go to the city. So that's kind of where we're at on this.
I understand that you submitted the petition to...
Yep, submitted the petition. We got all the, all the required paperwork that the attorney had put forward with it, and then the surveyors coming out on Thursday, I've got that contract done. I think that's the only contingency at this point now, is I just have to get the survey certificate submitted to the city. I did also submit our house plan and the septic plan with paperwork today, too, along with the application fee, so I think I've crossed the Ts and dotted the Is now.
Yeah, I think what we have to decide tonight is whether to have a public hearing or not, and so, I don't know if the council has any questions on that, or...
Mike and I have talked about it a few times, and I think a public hearing would be a good idea to have, see if anybody else has any concerns.
Yep, and that was part of the, in the statute, it does require for it to be the public hearing.
Sure.
But I guess tonight more so, I still decided to come here for this tonight. We're kind of trying to get a feel on it and feedback from the council to see what your thoughts on it were, or if you guys were leaning towards, in favor of it. We're, we're trying to hold off on starting, breaking ground, and getting the building permit.
Sure.
Until we kind of have that idea from the council, if that's something that would be favorable or not.
Well, if the, if the council does approve it, do we still have to have the public hearing?
Correct, yep. Yep.
So, entertain a motion to have a public hearing.
I'll make the motion to have a public hearing.
Our April council meeting?
I'll second that motion.
Second it?
Yep.
Okay. So I have a motion by Councillor Tate to approve a public hearing for the rezoning of Nadoo's property to a rural district, and seconded by Councillor Christensen. Any questions or discussion? Hearing done, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carried.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. So the next item on the agenda is Kerry from Conway, Duthon, Sneezying to present our audit report.
Good evening. I just want to say, start off and say thank you for giving CDS the opportunity to do the audit again. We do want to thank Joan and Tiffany as well for getting us all the information we needed, gathering those things, answering our questions, so there's quite a bit that goes into the audit, and they helped make sure that it went timely and smoothly, so we did appreciate that a lot. You should each have a copy of the financial statements, the management letter, and then the PowerPoint presentation, so I'll focus on the PowerPoint presentation, and it's up on the screen as well, so you can look there. So the first couple slides is the independent auditor's report. This summarizes the outcome of the audit and the expectations of parties involved in that process, so the financial statements are presented fairly, in our opinion. They are prepared on the modified cash basis, which is a basis of accounting other than accounting principles generally accepted. The audit was conducted in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards and government auditing standards. So all and all, the financial statements are the responsibility of the city, and then our responsibility is to express opinions on the financial statements based on our audit. So we do perform the audit to obtain reasonable assurance that the financials are free from material misstatement, and reasonable assurance is a high level of assurance. It is not absolute assurance, as we do not test every transaction that has happened during the year, but it doesn't guarantee that a material misstatement will be detected if one exists, but it does give you that reasonable assurance. So here's a look at the general fund and the cash and investment balances over the past five years. So there was a decrease of about fifteen thousand dollars from the previous year. There were transfers in that were under budget and capital outlay costs that were over budget, but really overall, the net effect did come fairly close to the budget, which is near that break-even level, so, pretty close there. And then here's a look at the general fund's receipts, disbursements, and fund balance over the past five years. I'll just kind of focus on those two, two more recent years. You can see that receipts and other financing sources, so 2024 did have an increase of about fifty thousand from the prior year. There are a few reasons for this increase. There was an increase in property taxes, increases in local government aid, there was a receipt of airport improvement grant, and then also a reimbursement, reimbursement from MnDOT related to the road project. And then you can see that disbursements went up as well. This was up about three hundred thousand from the previous year. There were increases in police department salaries, wages, benefits, there were increases in street repair and maintenance costs, and there were increases in capital outlay costs. So then, ending fund balance, which equates to your cash balance as well, is at one million nine hundred and twenty-two thousand. The unassigned portion of this is one million eight hundred and eighty-eight thousand. The Office of the State Auditor does recommend that this unassigned portion be maintained at thirty-five to fifty percent of receipts and no less than five months of disbursements. And I did a calculation over the last three years, and you can see two on here, but that fund balance does exceed the receipts and disbursements, so you have over essentially a year's worth of expenses covered in, in your fund balance or receipts essentially covered in your fund balance. Really, the general fund has, does have a very healthy fund balance, which is great in the sense that it could help give you some support for future initiatives. I would recommend that if this fund balance is used, that it's used for like a one-time type purchase, like maybe capital purchases, for example, rather than covering like operational costs. Operational costs should be covered by revenues that you would see on an ongoing basis, so just keep that in mind. I think you're doing a good job with that already, but I just wanted to continue to make that recommendation. So then, general fund receipts, the pie chart does show a breakdown of your 2024 receipts. The largest categories are property taxes, that's forty-three percent, and then intergovernmental revenues at thirty-seven percent. That table does show the last five years. I'm going to focus on the past two years, so there's not a lot of changes with property taxes, not a lot of changes with charges for services, but intergovernmental revenues, you can see, did go up, and I kind of touched on this on the previous slide, but in 2024 there was an increase in local government aid. This was about forty-eight thousand dollars of an increase, or about twelve percent. There was the grant for the airport improvements, which was about sixty-eight thousand dollars, and then there was also small cities grant assistance that came in during the year. So these additional aids and grants did help offset some one-time grants and aids that did come in, in 2023. There were some in that year as well. And then miscellaneous revenues, you can see, went up as well during the year, there was fifty-four thousand reimbursed from MnDOT for those road project costs. General fund disbursements, so looking at the, those 2023 and 2024 columns, those items in there, you can see that general government did decrease, so in 2023 there was paving and patching project in there, about a hundred and twenty-seven thousand, and this was to use up the American Rescue Plan funds, those COVID funds that were still out there. Public safety, that saw an increase, and this was increases in salaries, wages, and benefits for the police department. Highways and streets had an increase, there were increases in street salaries, wages, and benefits as well, and there was also some, a portion of the paving and patching project in there, too. And then looking down at capital outlay, you can see there's a larger increase there, so some of the larger purchases that were made during the year included the side-by-side, which I think was covered a lot by some donations, but this is the expense side, and then there's paving and patching work in here, some other small equipment, the kayak station activation fee is in there, brush cutter, John Deere loader, and then some materials for the garage. Any questions on the general fund, or comments? So then the water fund, cash and investment balance at the end of the year was seven hundred and sixty thousand, this went up about two hundred and six thousand from the previous year. Just looking at, you know, the increase that you can see over the past three years, the fund is doing a good job covering its operational costs, including its debt service payments, capital costs, and it's still continuing to build up that, that reserve, so that's really good to see.
Yeah.
Here's a look at, go ahead.
I just wanted to say on the general fund, we have been talking about, you know, reducing that, that fund with some capital improvement projects, like housing and, and childcare and stuff like that, so.
Yeah, yeah, those type of...
So, other things, park projects and so forth, so, we might see that be coming down in the future, so.
Yeah, and I think, you know, just kind of watching those costs and, you know, keeping tabs on that cash balance is, is the best thing to do there, but I think there is definitely room to, to use some of those costs for those projects, so those are great, great areas to, to be able to use those funds for, I would say.
Okay.
All right, so then the water fund, so this graph does focus on the operational outlook, so this would be prior to any debt payments, capital purchases. So, operating and non-operating receipts did go up about thirty-three thousand from the previous year, that's about eight point six percent of an increase. Operating and non-operating disbursements went up about twelve thousand dollars from the previous year, about, about eight percent, so both saw increases about the same amount. And then, overall net income was at two hundred and forty thousand, and this does fully cover this fund's debt payments, capital costs, there was a water line repair during the year, so that covered those costs, and then there were still funds going into reserves, which you would have seen reflected in those cash balances. The sewer fund is sitting kind of in a similar position as water, you know, some good increases in the past few years. It was up two hundred and fifty-eight thousand from the previous year, so again, this fund's doing a good job covering its debt service payments, capital costs, and also continuing to build, build reserves there. And then looking at the receipts and disbursements, so receipts did go down about forty thousand from the previous year. In 2023, there were insurance reimbursements for the wastewater treatment plant, and then you can see disbursements actually went up kind of about the same amount, and that's because those wastewater treatment, that roof replacement did happen in '24, so it's a timing difference there, but it did still cover its debt payments, capital costs, and then also a lighting installation, and then also had some funds going to reserves yet, And then Hobo Park, that did see an increase in cash of fifty thousand from the previous year. This fund, too, is doing a good job covering costs while continuing to build reserves, so overall at a, at a healthy position. And then, on the receipts and disbursement side, receipts did go down about a little less than forty thousand from the previous year, down about twelve percent. In 2023, there was also an insurance reimbursement that took place, and there was also a larger grant to cover the, the stone, stonework removal. In the 2024 year, there were decreases in receipts for like the non-seasonal camping, but I think that really equated to a timing difference, so more came in during '23, that was for the '24 season. And then for disbursements, that did go down about thirty-six thousand from the previous year, about twenty-three percent, so in '24 there were less costs to cover the stonework removal, and then other costs were down as well, but nothing else that was really significant. So I think my comment overall with the funds is kind of the same as what I mentioned with the general fund, they're all at, you know, a healthy position, and again, those fund, those reserves that are in there could be used for like the one-time costs, like, like Mayor Swenson mentioned, those are good options to use, use those funds if, if deemed appropriate, so. Here's a look at the city's future debt service on bonded debt, and I will caution that this does exclude two PFA notes, the water and sewer notes, so those final schedules aren't available yet, but they should be available for next year's audit, so then we can show updated numbers on this slide as well. And then for compliance, there's two compliance reports that we do issue, the first one is Minnesota legal compliance, and this is to make sure that the city is in accordance with state statutes, so no compliance issues that we noted there. And then government auditing standards, so this has two parts, internal control and compliance, no instances of non-compliance noted. For internal controls, there were two material weaknesses noted, both common for smaller cities, difficult to completely go away, comments that you guys have seen probably forever, so. Limited segregation of duties is when there's limited personnel in that cash handling position, so if one person can do like multiple touchpoints in that process, then you can't segregate duties. The best thing to mitigate your risk there is, you know, you can review your procedures if there's any additional oversight that is deemed necessary to implement that. I don't know of anything off the top of my head that, that I would recommend at this point, though. I do think you do a good job having that oversight in place. And then just question items as needed, so example, when you review the claims dispersment listing at council meetings, like that's a good place to kind of oversee some of the purchases. And then auditor-prepared financial statements are required if we prepare, so the best thing to do here is just to review the financial statements, make sure that it's consistent with your understanding of costs and revenues, you know, that have happened over the year. Any questions on, at this point? So then professional standards do require that certain items be communicated at the completion of the audit, so accounting practices are management's responsibility, and that an example of that would be the number of years an asset's being depreciated. There were no difficulties encountered during the audit, and any adjustments that we noted have been made by the finance department. There were no disagreements with management. A representation letter has been provided to us, which states all essential information has been given to us during the audit process, and then any consultations with other accountants, just to make us aware if those are underway, so that way they have all the relevant facts. And that is all I have, then.
Well, thank you, Carrie.
Thank you.
Yeah. You're welcome.
Questions or anything?
Appreciate all the work that you do every year, so.
Yeah.
You're welcome. Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Anything comes up during the year, don't hesitate to reach out and let me know, so.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks a lot.
Next item on the agenda is Dave and Patty Glossid, Water's Edge, request to approve the Benson Hockey Association request for lawful gambling permit to hold horse races and meat raffles on Saturday at Water's Edge, so.
Pretty much says it all.
I got one thing on that, Dave.
Yeah.
You know, through the years, we've never tried to overload, you know, like I'm doing it on Saturday, so Wendy took it on Friday, your kids are doing it on Thursday. I think you got the most dynamic spot to do ears on Sunday, all the late people. Well, we're not, yeah, we're not saying that Saturday is like written in stone by any means, you know. I'm just saying, Dr. K...
Right, right, right. We don't want to do that, because then it takes away from everybody.
Because I don't want to do something else. If we were thinking Saturday, it would probably be earlier in the afternoon.
If we were thinking Saturday, it would probably be earlier in the afternoon than when you guys, because we don't want to step on toes. We're just kind of trying to keep things on this side of the road.
See, we have the fire department in there now.
Right, right.
And they do a great job.
Oh, yeah, I see that.
And, and we asked them.
We reached out to them, and they said they didn't want to do any more activities.
They're just too busy with their kids and that.
So we just thought, you know, awesome weekends or whatever, we thought we'd throw that out there.
So the fire department isn't doing their.
Yes, yes.
They're still there.
Thursdays.
We just want, they just didn't want to do any more.
They didn't want to do any more than just Thursday.
So they're going to stay where they're at.
So that's still going to be on Thursdays.
Yes, right.
But we just thought, I mean, if we could pull something on, during the weekend, but like, earlier in the afternoon, because I know you guys are like at five-thirty.
Or a Sunday, or maybe a Wednesday. Just have a horse race or something.
Yep.
Well, it just draws people to talk.
It does, and that's.
And I thought, man, if I was back in your day, I'd be rocking that baby. Well, you got the lake.
And it's there.
Right.
So you pop a horse race.
Shoot the dog off a couple times, everybody on the lake.
Yeah, and that's why I said, we're just, we're just kind of trying to keep things on this side a little bit more.
Right, yeah.
Because I, I just kind of feel that this side of the lake gets left out of a lot of stuff.
And it's, it's not against the, the fire department, they're, they're going to do business as usual.
We asked them first.
And I get that, of course.
We asked them, and they just said they got kids, and they just don't want to spend any more time.
We understand that.
Yep, totally.
So it's just for the summer, or is this going to be, if it's successful, all year long?
Year long, yeah.
Yep.
I, I don't see any issues. I mean, if they ask the fire department, and the fire department was already satisfied with their current role, I think.
We're just trying to keep our hours a little different.
Yes.
Right.
Exactly.
We don't want to cross that.
Would you be interested in, like, a Wednesday or a Sunday, or?
Yeah, it's like I said, Saturday's not written in stone by any means.
It might be any day. It could be a Wednesday, a Tuesday, or a Monday, you know, just something. Over Fourth of July weekend, you know, runs, they run on Mondays, Tuesdays, whatever.
And they're still going to do the Thursdays, the fire.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Yep.
That's just on the schedule every week.
Yep.
That's not going to change. Yours is on the schedule every week, same thing.
Yep.
And Wendy's, she does every other Friday.
Every other Friday, okay.
Probably in the summer, they did think maybe they would test it to do more, but they have people from up north, so I'm kind of thinking they're going to go every other.
Sure.
Oh, sure, yep.
People like doing it.
Oh, yeah.
Well, it gives people something to do.
All right, bring them in and plan that and have a couple beers and a burger and.
There you go.
And I know a lot of people, they just kind of like to bebop from one to another.
We get them over, we get them on this side of the lake, they'll bounce all over.
Right.
Because I know you have, they used to start all the Blakebuns and when they went to Dargies and this place, yeah.
Yep.
Some made the whole gamut, so. No, I.
I don't see a issue.
If we want, try not to go over, we weren't going to go on your time.
Nope.
Nope, nope.
And that's foolish for anybody.
That wasn't, that wasn't the plan at all.
No, no, I take it, but I wanted to bring it up, so.
Yep.
It was just having more opportunities than they. And we, Vicki just says, you know, I got kids, I don't want to stand here and do that at night.
Tracy, Tracy is younger once.
And during the day, on Saturdays or Sundays.
Traveling basketball and all this stuff, so.
Yeah, you got to understand that, sure.
I'll make a motion to approve the Water's Edge request for the Benson Hockey Association to have a lawful gambling permit to hold horse races at Water's Edge.
Okay. I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilor Christensen to approve the request to have a horse races and meat raffles at the Water's Edge, and seconded by Councilor Tafe. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carried, so.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good luck. Thank you.
All right, next item on the agenda is Nick Kous from Widseth.
Hi, I'm Nick Kous with Widseth. Joan has it on the agenda here to just give an update on the engineering study for the wastewater treatment facility and the facility plan and water system costs. We've been working on that, collecting the data necessary for the reports, and putting together the detailed cost estimates for the proposed projects. So that's moving ahead. And that's, I guess, all I have on that specific project. Any questions about that?
Did you, if, are you, are you done with that one, then?
I am, yes.
Have you heard anything from Jason from HRA? I know that they were, he's going to reach out on Friday about the Pope County HRA project.
I had not heard anything back from him, but you have his contact now. So if you want to reach out to him, I guess I'm not really driving that project.
I just was wondering if maybe.
But, yeah, no, he hadn't followed up with anything. I'd imagine he would copy you as well.
Okay.
It's up in northeast.
What's that? Yep, so they.
Or northwest.
Yep, he was going to reach out to the landowner again. We were on an email communication, and he said that he was going to follow up with him last Friday, and so I figured he wouldn't have a response by then, but I just figured, case nickered something I didn't have to ask, so.
I think we have an email today saying it's still kind of undecided with the landowner.
Okay.
So there's, I believe that's what the email said.
Okay.
It sounded like you should know pretty soon, though.
I guess that's where, that's where that one's at.
And so this is for the street project.
Ah, no. So the, the confirmation of requests for engineering services for the water treatment plant rehabilitation and the water storage tank project. That's for the upgrading of the high-service pumps to, replacing those and then upgrading them to VFD, so that we can do the water storage tank project, which is redoing the joints and resealing the bolts on the bolted steel tanks. So this would be the design and construction admin and construction services.
What do we know about the grant so far?
As far as the grant goes, I haven't gotten any update as to whether the state is going to pass a bonding bill. That will be the only way that we would get funding this year. Otherwise, you'd have to fund it through other means, and then we'd, so that's kind of where that's at.
I believe this is the one that Larry said we should know probably around September, if we were to get the PFA grant.
Correct, yes. So we'll update the PFA and, and the Minnesota Department of Health Drinking Water Revolving Fund. Those are the two pots of money that would fund the project. And their funding cycle wasn't funded at this time, the only way that it would be funded this year. So we did apply last year to receive these funds, and we did not fall into the funded category this year. But it, we were in the could be funded, possible to be funded category, which is just below that. So just out of the funded range, and then if the state passes a bonding bill, this project might move up into the funded category when they make that announcement. But we won't, there's no guarantee on that, it just depends on what the legislature does. However, we will update the Department of Health and PFA so that they keep us on the list, so that way, when they issue the new list in September, hopefully we've moved up, because it is by priority, and also projects that have been on there get a little bit, get a few more points, because they've been on there. So that helps us move up, up in the ranking, so. That should help us move into the funded category for next year anyway, if, if we're going to hold off on the project that long.
It may also be an option to get funded through a local bank, but then they don't go out more than ten years, so, for the payback.
Correct.
Any questions for Nick, or?
Nope.
I don't think so. I mean, are you looking here, seeing if we're going to move forward or if we're going to wait?
Yeah, it's, it's really up to the council if they want to move forward or not. If they feel that the, the project needs to get done, then I'd say you should move ahead, and, and we'll get the plans and specs ready, and, and then it'll move into construction. If not, then we can hold off, that's fine, too. I believe Randy would like the, the project to move forward, as some of that equipment and the piping are fairly aged and, and in, in poor repair.
Yeah, I agree, we should move forward, because we've been kind of putting off the water tower repair, and we need to do this to move forward with that.
And then if we did get selected for the grant, that could still be applied and be used to reverse it, so.
Yes, we'd have to follow some steps in the design process to ensure that you met all the requirements to do that. But, yeah, we could do that if you wanted to keep that as an option.
Do we need a different confirmation request for the services, or would that still be covered with this one?
That, that could still be covered with this one.
I'll make the motion to move forward with this project.
Hold a second.
I'll second the motion.
Hey, we have a motion by Councilor Tafe to move forward with the water treatment plant rehabilitation and water storage tank rehabilitation, seconded by Councilor Christensen. Any other questions or discussion?
I just think with the audit that just happened, too, you know, this is a prime example of using, you know, a project to use towards, to reduce our balance and stuff. So I think this is, clean drinking water, safe water is essential for our community, so I think this is the right move, and hopefully we secure the grant and get some of the receipts back from that, so.
Sounds good. Thank you so much.
Yep, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carried.
Thank you, Nick. Thank you.
Ah, next item on the agenda is, we need to schedule a work session to discuss Hobo Park issues and so forth, so. I'm kind of looking at March twentieth, at noon or afternoon, or, I don't know if that would work for everybody.
That should work for me.
Is that one of the dates that?
Was that one of the dates that, Councilor, okay.
Yeah.
March twentieth at noon?
That's a Thursday, so.
Yeah, that works for me. You want me to make a motion?
No.
Yeah, what, so, is noon okay, or?
Noon would be fine for me.
Is that okay for everybody? Let's set it for twelve o'clock on, on March twentieth, a work session.
Okay.
And, like I say, the primary topic will be Hobo Park, so.
Yep.
All right, next on the agenda is our police department report from Chief Johnson.
So for highlights, February, we had a hundred and sixty calls for service compared to a hundred and eighty-nine from January, so down a little bit. Were there any questions on any of the calls for service that were covered there? Okay. Only thing I have, this came in after I'd done my packet. Pope, what I just handed you, Pope County Humane Society reached out to me, and they are looking to put a microchip scanner for, for dogs. They like to put one in Starbuck and one in Glenwood. And they are purchasing, those two photos that you have, there's two photos on those, that email I sent you. First about, that would be the one design, or the second design would be on that second page. I guess I, they were looking at what if they were to install them, they would want to install them here on the city property. So then I also put on the back page, suggested areas if we were going to decide to put them in, oh, kind of those blue little circles is kind of where I was, I was thinking. But virtually, they're paying for everything. It'll be a microchip, basically it'll scan them. The dog, the chip, so if it's a dog that's at large, instead of always the PD trying to have to track them down, people can walk up and use the scanner. It'll be self-explanatory, it'll give them some information on the board, it tells them how to look up the information, who to call, to figure out who owns the dog. But again, they are paying for everything. Only thing they, we, that they request is us to pick a, a location of where we want the scanner at. And my suggestion for this, for the device is probably that first picture. That other one looks kind of boxy, bigger, and you have to put it on a sidewalk. I think this one you could just put in the grass, just a pole. It's battery operated, so it doesn't need popper, power, and if it runs out, it notifies us or them, or however it notifies them, and they just come back and replace the battery. But so, unless you guys have a different spot or location from what I put on those, but I thought those would probably be the best, to kind of be out of the way of everything and in the grass, and people can just pull up and, and scan from there. But I guess that was the only direction they asked, is just.
One on the south side doesn't have a curb or anything on.
Yeah, I would lean towards the north one.
So that's why I thought is the one, yeah, wherever the curb is, and it's kind of out of the way of everything. And people can just walk up and scan it. It's right on the road, so it won't take much for someone to pull up and scan. Sure. But they would take care of all the cost and the funding of just installing, we just got to pick a spot, so.
Well, I, I agree. I think the one on the first page is better, like, on a pole and stuff. The second one looks like an old newspaper.
Yeah, and then you'd have to put it on a sidewalk to concrete or something, and, yeah, just give it away.
And do you say Glenwood is doing this, too?
So they're going to put one in Glenwood, and they're going to put one in Starbuck.
Okay.
I'm not sure where they're putting the one in Glenwood, but I'm.
I mean, if there's no cost to the city, I mean, there's a benefit to it, it saves you guys time and trouble.
Yeah.
I don't know how many lost, missing dogs you guys get a year, but I know it's not zero, so.
No, it's definitely not zero.
Yeah, I mean.
But it would definitely save, yeah, for us to, some time for people to just walk up and, especially if we're not available, they can just walk up and see if it's microchipped and get the dog owner information.
Yeah, I think that is a fine project to pursue and go forward with.
So you guys would think the north, north side?
I think so, yeah.
Is that what you're telling?
Yeah.
You would, you wouldn't want it right along Depot Lane for when you're moving snow or anything.
Right.
You'd rather have it.
Over here would probably be better. I guess I haven't seen that before.
With just the.
Right where the.
That should be fine for moving snow. That would be our way.
Yeah.
The pole's not, it's just.
Oh, battery.
So I don't know if you need a motion for that or not, but otherwise.
Well, I can make the motion to approve getting the pet chip scanner put by the city parking lot on the north side.
Here, a motion by Councilor Tafe to approve the microchip scanning station on the north side of the parking lot, and seconded by Councilor Malkel. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carried, so.
And the only other thing I had was that Dane and I, we were looking at surveillance video. Our surveillance, our surveillance cameras now, the DVR only holds like five days or four, four and a half days of memory. So if an event does occur, like we had something happen, and we wanted to come back and look, usually within five days, we can't, we can't figure it out, because it's two times past. So I did look into a, a new DVR, and I looked at it, and it was only about seven hundred bucks. Well, not even that, it was seven hundred plus, seven hundred dollars total with another sixteen terabyte hard drive to attach to the new DVR, came to about seven hundred dollars. So I think we're just going to purchase that and then just upgrade that DVR, so that it will hold up to thirty days of storage. So if there's something that does happen, then we can go back instead of worrying about five days. So I did go ahead and already, just order that, so just let you guys know, so.
It's the camera with the camera.
Yep, so the camera, yeah, the camera will say it's just the DVR box that does all the recording that we upgraded.
So it'll hold up to thirty days?
Yep, this will hold up to thirty days now after, once we get the device.
And I think that puts the city in a better position for liability reasons, you know, especially when we have events out back here, or if we have people renting the community center to have thirty days of, in case something happens, someone. or if we have people renting the community center to have thirty days of, in case something happens, someone goes to the hospital and seven days later, you know, whatever. So I think it, it's a needed thing that we, we should have. Five days was a little, I didn't realize it was that small, so.
And it's just because we have sixteen cameras and it's constantly recording and just can't hold all that data, so. Then that's all I have, so.
All right, okay.
Thank you.
See, next item on the agenda is the, uh, fire department. I don't know if anybody from the fire department is here? No? So we'll move on to water and sewer department. Randy?
All right, first of all, I'd like to thank you for moving along with the water plant project. We actually had a leak in the piping this morning. So, um, it was in the two-inch copper that we had a leak. I don't know, probably last summer in. So now Phil's, he was replacing the other half of it to get that sealed up again. So yeah, it's definitely a needed project. Um, we also have a water leak right now, uh, kind of by Minnewaska Lutheran on Wallen Street between, uh, Broadway and Eighth. Uh, it sounds like tomorrow we're gonna, um, Ferguson's are going to come dig that up and hopefully get that taken care of. Um, the next thing I have.
Is that right in the street?
Yep, yeah, it's right where the alley.
North of, uh, of Minnewaska Lutheran?
Yep, northwest, right where the alley is. It's kind of in line with the street and the alley.
Oh, the alley.
Yep. So dig it up and find out what it is.
I don't think that water was going into the basement though. I think that was just the melt that they usually get, right? It wasn't because of the water leak?
I think when it first started, it was running on that, uh, the east side of the road, kind of along the church where you're talking.
Yep.
But then, when a water leak typically starts, it usually doesn't start right over where it's leaking. It'll, it'll find the easiest path, which sometimes is way off to the side. Once it leaks for a while, it usually gets a lot closer to where it's leaking. Uh, and once it kind of thaws the ground out and then it moved across the other side of the road, uh, by the afternoon. So it, it really wasn't running by the church anymore. Um, there was still a little ice and stuff there. But that's why we, we usually like to let them leak a while so that they thaw the ground out. It's easier to dig and you know where they're at, so you're not digging down the street a couple hundred feet trying to find out where it is too, so.
Well, and I, I just know that the, the church has issues with every, every spring when things start melting, that they get water in their basement and stuff like that. I drove by in the afternoon too and it's all on the west side of the road, so I don't think water from that leak was.
No, it, it shouldn't make it there. It's, they, they've just got a really deep basement and the, kind of a higher water table, so there's some pump runs a lot.
Yep.
So. Okay, the next item I have is, uh, dock lumber. I've got a couple quotes. The lowest one was from Bonanza Valley. And there's actually a deduct if we try a new type of foam that they thought would, uh, work just fine for us. So it was actually six hundred and twenty-four dollars cheaper to go with that new foam. So I would request that we, um, accept the quote from Bonanza Valley for four thousand, uh, six hundred and fourteen dollars.
I'll make the motion to accept the Bonanza Valley lumber bid.
I'll second the motion.
Here we have a motion by Counselor Tafe to, uh, accept the bid from Bo- Bonanza Valley for the dock's lumber at forty-six hundred and fourteen dollars. Seconded by Counselor Christensen. Any further questions or anything? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried, so.
All right, the next thing I have is for the mowers. We received a grant from the airport to purchase, um, a new mower to replace that two thousand eight that, uh, we last purchased with, uh, that same grant. Um, the quote came to, uh, this one is for a Kubota. It was in it, uh, it's for an F twenty-six ninety. Uh, so we went a little smaller on the horsepower to, um, step down so we didn't have to have the emission stuff on it. So it's a twenty-five horse, so it's a little bit smaller, but, um, hopefully it's a lot less issues we have with it. So the quote for that one was twenty-one thousand eight ninety-two with the trade-in. I guess I would request that we move forward with the Kubota for the airport grant for that, I believe it's a ninety-ten split, so.
Yeah. We haven't approved that before.
This, um, we have to actually wait, I mean, get the approval from, for the airport grant, but they've told us we're going to get it, so.
Okay.
We don't officially have it from the.
Okay, so we don't have to get the approval and order it yet, or?
We'll have to send in, uh, documents with the price.
Okay, so then I did get a quote for a John Deere and a Kubota. They're both basically identical machines. I, I would recommend that we, we get one of each. We get the Kubota with the airport grant and trade in our other mower and get a John Deere. Um, just to try it out, I checked with a couple other cities that ran both machines. They liked both of them. Some, a lot of them kind of preferred the John Deere a little better. I thought it'd be something worth trying to. Both machines have a two-year warranty on them. A lot of cities, they run them for two years and then they, you know, they trade them in. We get a pretty good discount on them. And then you don't ever have to worry about the repair cost every year. I think a lot of years we're spending over a couple thousand dollars just on repairs to kind of keep them going every year. It might be a wise move to, in the future to kind of look at, seeing what it would cost to maybe trade them every couple of years and keep up with that warranty. Um, but to trade in the, our other machine, which is a twenty-seventeen, um, it would be about sixteen thousand eight hundred and forty-five dollars, um, to boot, to order the John Deere.
Was part of the grant for the airport that the mower would only be used down there, or why would we need two?
Yes, it can only be used on airport property.
Yeah, we have two mowers.
Um, yeah, I, I don't see any reason why to try both types of mowers when it'd be route to go.
A very fair comparison because they'd pretty much be identical machines. Uh, the only thing I was leary, leery about with the John Deere is the foot controls are different. The Kubota, it's forward is forward, backwards is backward. It's like a rocker switch. John Deere is side by side, so. When you're used to running one and you get on the other one, you, it's kind of a learning curve all over again and when we're mowing ponds and, you know, ditches and stuff like that. But a lot of times, one guy always runs one machine and the other guy always runs the other. Unless something is broke on one, then they kind of switch, so it maybe won't be too bad, so.
Yeah, I think that. I think you guys will be able to figure it out. Two minutes and you'll get back in the.
Yep, yeah, so.
Well, are we going to wait for that grant to come through then, before we make a motion on this?
Um, you can make a motion on the John Deere.
The, the John Deere one was separate from that.
Yep, I'll make a motion then to trade in our current mower and pursue the purchase of the John Deere mower from Midwest Machinery.
I'll second that.
Here we have a motion by, uh, Counselor Christensen to, uh, move ahead with the purchase of the John Deere, uh, mower and trade in the old one. Seconded by Counselor Tafe, uh, for sixteen thousand eight forty-five, I guess.
Yep.
Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
Okay, thanks. That's all I have. Anything for me?
Nope.
Thank you.
Yep.
Next on the agenda is, uh, our court treasurer and, uh, refurbers AED.
Yeah, all I have for now is that in twenty-twenty-three, we sent in a grant to get four, um, refurbished AEDs for free um, from this Minnesota AED project. And just a couple weeks ago, we got word that we would, could get one. So we did get one new one. It's guaranteed only for a year, but it's set to go and it's in the community center. Can't see it through the barrier, but up on the shelf where the coats are. So, um, just to let everyone know it's there and working and updated. And that's really all I had except to let everyone know that, um, Tiffany will be gone at the MCFOA conference next week and I'll be gone the end of June at the League of Minnesota Cities Conference, so.
End of June? Okay. All right. Next item, uh, on the agenda, I don't think we have anything for planning and zoning. Uh, airport committee, I don't know, Tom, if you had anything?
I don't.
All right. Uh, we'll move on. The next item is streets and parks. Chris Garacki, uh, has written up a, uh, an, uh, for an ARP grant and I think she did a wonderful job. I thought it was an excellent write-up for the grant and, uh, so has that been submitted, do you know?
It's submitted Saturday.
Yes, okay. I don't know if you want to.
Yeah.
About that or say anything about it, or?
I mean, without getting too specific into it, because if we don't get the grant, you know, we're not going to move forward, but it's basically accessibility at the park to get to shelter number two and in, in increased, uh, parking and handicap spots, so, um, the one caveat is we'd have to have some plaque that recognizes that, um, AARP donated funds towards it, but that's pretty typical, so. Um, so yeah, we'll wait to see if we, um, succeed with our grant request and move forward with the project then. Parks committee also met, um, in February, uh, Roger, Auberg, Tiffany Holton, myself and Chris Garacki, um, just talking about um, future of the Parks Committee and stuff like that. And, um, I think we're going to try to start doing monthly meetings to address things that come up, so I think that's, uh, a good movement that, to stay on top of things and, um, Chris Garacki and myself also met that week down at Hobo Park. Um, we were able to see the, the bathrooms, the tiling getting put in and they're making good progress on that. And then we went over with, um, Randy and Derek, um, a couple of the issues that were brought to city council's attention, um, last year. And then they had followed up last meeting too about just general improvements at Hobo Park, so, um, I think, yeah, we're, we have that special session that's scheduled for the twentieth of October and try to get everything in place for when it opens in May.
Yeah, so we'll have that work session on the twentieth and, uh, and move forward with that, so. And, uh, uh, next item on the agenda is the, uh, is the Public Safety and Emergency Preparedness Committee and, uh, I think, uh, Mr. Tafe, you want to speak on that?
Mitch Johnsru, Doug Noes, Chris Garacki and I got together and we were just going over our emergency preparedness kind of plan and we kind of came up with a couple of things that we thought we should kind of move forward on improving what we do, having maybe a meeting on, uh, and bringing Tina from the county over to help, uh, guide us in. If there is an emergency, what are all of our roles? Um, because we don't really know what that's going to be. Uh, and then kind of the biggest thing that we came out of is just to make sure that the city is following all of OSHA's guidelines. And currently, the city staff isn't taking, uh, yearly OSHA training. And so we kind of recommend that, uh, we have the city staff do that and there's NeoGov that, uh, charges three hundred and fifty dollars a year for that training. So we recommend that we move forward with doing that.
Is that something we need a motion on, John?
Probably.
Yeah. Um, I'll make a motion that we, uh, move ahead with that, uh, that annual training, uh, OSHA training and, uh, you know, if we have a second, uh.
I can second that.
So I made a motion that we, um, move ahead with, uh, with this recommendation of the, uh, Safety and Emergency Committee meeting, uh, to have annual training for the, uh, city staff, uh, seconded by, uh, Counselor Tafe. Uh, any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried, so. So we'll move on to new business and, uh, the first item is to discuss approval of a public hearing to update city ordinance to allow chickens in the city limit. And, uh, this is something that Planning and Zoning, uh, discussed and, uh, and I guess recommended and, uh, I think you got a copy in the, uh, in your packet, uh, of an ordinance and so forth and, uh. I guess my con- my concern is, you know, with the bird flu and so forth, that it's becoming more and more, uh, transmissible and it's being transmitted to other things other than, uh, chickens and, and, uh, birds. I think it's gone to cattle and, uh, I think one, one human has also died of, uh, the bird flu and so forth, so. But that's just me and, uh, there's, uh, apparently we've had some questions in the city office, uh, whether we're going to approve this or not.
Well, I think it's our duty to hold this public hearing, to get the input of, you know, the residents, the citizens and see what their thought process is because there's perceived benefits and detriments for, for this, so. I'll make a motion that we approve a public hearing to update the city ordinance to allow chickens in the city limit.
I'll second that.
Okay. So I have a motion by, uh, Counselor Christensen to, uh, approve a public hearing, uh, on the ordinance for keeping chickens within city limits, seconded by Counselor Tafe. And would we have that at an April meeting too? So that would be at our April, uh, council meeting, so. Any questions or discussion?
Um, do you think we'd have to get like a shipping station, Mitch, for the chickens too, or?
And you can call them chicks.
Right.
Okay. There are no further comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Uh, next item on the agenda is to approve the, uh, city fire contract for twenty-twenty-five. And, uh, with the fires we've had, our costs have gone up, uh, quite a bit for the city and, uh, I don't know if there's any questions or anything, so.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the city fire contract for twenty-twenty-five.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion to, by Counselor Christensen for, to, uh, approve the fire contracts for twenty-twenty-five, seconded by, uh, Counselor Tafe. Is this for twenty-twenty-five and twenty-six, or just twenty-five?
It's, it will be paid in twenty-twenty-five.
Okay, yeah, so it's be paid in twenty-twenty-five, okay. So is there any, uh, questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Next item on the agenda is to discuss the possible, uh, potential vacation of Garter Street uh, between East Second Street and East Third Street. Uh, approval would require passage of resolution, uh, twenty-twenty-five dash zero seven, so.
Um, I guess my only thoughts on that is there's no perceived benefit to vacating and vacating would create additional headache in the future if we didn't need to get in there, even if we had, um, agreement from the residents ahead of time. I mean, I'm not, I'm not for vacating city. I mean, I'm not, I'm not for vacating city, within city limits, you know, I don't, like I said, there's no perceived benefit and there's a potential detriment if something happens in the future, so I don't. My, my thought would be that the answer would be no, because nothing is improved by it. But I'm just one person, that's just one opinion.
Was that your motion?
That's, no, I mean, if you guys wanna make a motion.
Oh, I thought you were pushing a motion.
No, I was just discussing it and that's, my, my thought is I, I don't see a perceived benefit, so.
No, and that's what Randy said, there's nothing to gain for them or us or anybody, so.
Yeah, and I'm in agreeance with you as well, I don't see enough of a benefit that it would justify vacating it.
Okay, um, do we have a motion to?
I can make the motion to deny the vacation of Garter Street.
Okay, and I'll second that one.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilor Tafe to, uh, deny the, uh, vacation of, uh, Garter Street between East Second and East Third Street, uh, seconded by Councilor Christensen. Any other discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carried, so. Next item on the agenda is to discuss the salary range for twenty-twenty-five seasonal positions at Hobo Park and general maintenance and beach and so forth.
How did you, uh, reach these numbers for the new rates?
Uh, this was discussed with the Personnel Committee, which is, uh, me and, uh, Councilor Tafe, and, uh, so.
Is it a flat percentage increase, or how did you get that?
I tell what the increased emphasis we're gonna put on Hobo Park and, uh, and the city park, but, uh,
Trying to get them into a competitive wage.
Um, yeah, I guess, you know, the Hobo Park manager is seventeen twenty-five to twenty, you know, I think that's fine. I kinda take issue with the Hobo Park staff going from sixteen to seventeen, that's like a six percent raise and I think if we're charging residents down there ten percent more, I mean, that, I, I think that should be seventeen fifty is my personal opinion on that one. The same with the part-time seasonal, so going from sixteen to seventeen fifty, i- in my opinion, is more commensurate with the rate.
I don't know what the, uh, cost is gonna be for the improvements down there at Hobo Park and so forth. We're paving the roads this year and redoing the bathrooms in the main clubhouse and, uh, and so forth, but.
Well, I mean, if, I'm just, my whole point is it's, it's hard to get helpers, viable helpers and, you know, a more competitive pay would incentivize more applicants that we could sluck from and, like I said, I mean, going from, going up two dollars and seventy-five cents for the manager and the employees are only getting a dollar, which is six percent, I feel like it might be in our best interest to increase that amount, but that's just my opinion.
You're saying seven, seventeen fifty, or thinking?
I think seventeen fifty would put them right at ten percent.
I don't have an issue with that.
That'd be nine point three percent, so I think that the Personnel Committee wants to.
Any other questions or discussion on?
Um, no, just the Hobo Park staff and the Parks Maintenance Part-Time Schedule, seasonal one, I think are the, that's my only, my only thought or input that would need to be addressed, but if you guys wanna have another committee meeting and discuss it and.
So you're looking at both Hobo Park and?
I think so. I think so.
You don't have a problem with that, or?
I don't have a problem with that.
That includes our part-time guys too, correct?
Right.
Yep.
So.
They do a lot for us, I get, I mean, I would agree with giving them a little extra with us being such a small staff. Our part-time guys are crucial with us going.
Uh, and a lot of other positions in town had received, you know, compensation changes, so I mean, if they're getting just about ten percent, I feel like that is, that is fair, given it's twenty-twenty-five and having better help is better for this town too, so.
So are you making a motion for that? So.
I'll make a motion to approve the proposed salaries for twenty-twenty-five for the part-time seasonal positions with the amendment of the Hobo Park staff and the Parks Maintenance Part-Time Seasonal. Instead of increasing to seventeen, would increase to seventeen fifty, which would make it about a ten percent increase.
I'll second that.
So I have a motion by Councilor Christensen to, uh, increase the seasonal part-time, uh, staff salaries, uh, from seventeen dollars to seventeen fifty, seconded by Councilor Tafe. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carried. Uh, next on the agenda is to review the, uh, Johnson Controls Quote to upgrade and move the obsolete fire control panel and restore the office panic buttons to working order. Uh, they can't fix what we've got now, right?
Correct, it's, um, outdated panel and it's currently in the police department, so, um, as long as it needs to be replaced at some point, we thought we'd move it into the utility closet and then they would also, um, install the panic buttons to alert, dispatch the police if there's issues in the office. They currently, um, aren't working correctly.
So I, I think like we talked, you could either have a panic button in the police department or they have a remote, uh, Control One Two, or a remote.
Currently, yes.
But that could be used, so.
Have you gotten any input from, uh, the fire chief on if this is, if he agrees with this, or?
Yes, he does agree with that, he has seen that.
What I do care to do because technically, no one should be going into our office, but they, they don't have permission for data privacy through BCA, you have to have clearance to go in there, so. Without us being around, we really don't want should be accessing our office. And I know that requires sitting in our office and we're not entering.
I'll make a motion to approve getting the new controls for the fire system.
Yeah, I'll, I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilor Tafe to, uh, approve Johnson Controls Quote to upgrade and move the obsolete fire control panel and restore the office panic buttons to working order, seconded by Councilor Christensen. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carried. And I guess we already talked about the last item, right?
We did.
I already made the motion for the Waters Edge, so.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you, everyone.